Recording in progress.
All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now seven P M. And I uh join our city council meeting for tonight, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. For all those that are able to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we take roll call, can we just make sure council members all have their microphones on and aimed at their faces and their mouths so that the sound doesn't project over them. And with that, Ms. Hogan.
Councilmember Rounds?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Doughty?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Freymark?
Here.
Councilmember Friend?
Here.
Councilmember Houston's not here this evening.
All right, moving into citizen communications for items. Absolutely.
Uh make a motion to excuse Gabe Houston.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Freymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
All right, so Gabe's uh absence is excused. Items, uh citizen communications for items not on the agenda. Mr. Pettit. And the mic is a little wonky there if you don't mind moving it over a little.
You don't want it hearing my stomach growl?
No.
Is that better?
Absolutely, thank you.
My name is Rick Pettit, owner of Remnant Farms Feed and Supply. I am here tonight to exercise my First Amendment right and testify into the public record. I will be briefed, so please bear with me. In Isaiah forty-five, twenty-two, it says, "Look to me and be saved, all the ends of the earth, for I am God, and there is no other." God created mankind to be in relationship with him, but sin, missing the mark, severed that relationship, it says in Romans three, twenty-three, "For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God." God has made a way to restore this relationship, as it says in John three, sixteen, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whoever believes in him should not perish, but have everlasting life." In John fourteen, six, Jesus said to him, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man comes to the Father except through me." You enter into this relationship by being born again. As stated in Romans ten, nine through ten, "If you confess with your mouth that Jesus is Lord, and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, you will be saved. For with the heart one believes unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation." First Corinthians six, two states, "Behold, now is the accepted time; behold, now is the day of salvation." Because of the last two years, Remnant Farms Feed and Supply is no longer just a feed store, but has become a house of prayer. O sovereign God, be glorified! Fill this room and guide this council. Heal this land. In Jesus mighty name, thank you for your blood. Amen. Thank you for your time.
So can I just comment on that?
Yes.
I do appreciate seeing your advertisements on your uh walls there for uh the promised church with the Sunday services and the various different things for um Easter and those. So that is wonderful. Um I just wanted to commend you and say thank you for that. And the other piece I would throw out there, I know there's a little bit of chit chat, and this is kind of a side piece, the Charlie Kirk assassination that occurred. We as a city did put our flags at half-mast starting on Thursday morning. Um they were done that until uh Sunday afternoon. So I appreciate you coming and giving us some scripture tonight, Mr. Pettit.
No worry. Thanks.
Nope, thank you. Any other questions, comments for council or anyone in the audience?
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Brown?
Hi, I'm Aaron Brown, and I'm here representing the downtown Woodland Revitalization Group. We brought you hot summer nights this summer, which went really, really well. Very excited to collaborate with the city uh over Halloween and excited to bring Winter Fest as well. I've got invitations for our upcoming meet and greet, which is tomorrow, Tuesday, September sixteenth, from five to eight P M. in the new Civic Center, and everyone's invited. So I've got invitations with me, and I put a stack of them also outside next to the agendas.
Just so everyone's clear, tomorrow night, five P M. I want to make sure everyone heard, and it's at the Civic Center, the white building right there by the library. I just want to make sure people are going to the right building.
That's right.
Comments, questions from the community? Excellent, thank you. I will see you tomorrow night. Um, any other items not on the agenda from anyone in the community? All right, agenda approval.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns from anyone in the audience about our agenda? Any conversation from council? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Freymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving into reports to standing committees, public safety.
Okay, that would be me. Um, we met at five twenty-eight tonight. Um Chief, Councilmember Friend and myself were in attendance. Um, tonight we talked about the M O U for dash cams has been signed, and we're awaiting on policy um right now, and they also need to kind of reassign some of the logins and stuff um for some of our officers. Um, October first, um, the plan is to have our S R O officer um in the schools, so that's super exciting. I'm so excited. I'm sorry. It's been a long time coming. Um, and then tonight we also have our camping ordinance second reading. Um, so that's all under old business, and then our new business is the power D M S that they had currently been using. They are adding a new digital reports program to it that we will see on our agenda tonight to get passed through. And we support it um as far as public safety goes. And we ended at five fifty, and our next meeting will be October twentieth.
Any questions from the community about public safety from Melissa or Chief? Anyone from council? All right, human resources.
All right, so we met at six oh one tonight. Um, the mayor, councilmember Freymark, councilmember Burke, and myself were in attendance. Um, we talked about we are still looking to hire somebody for payroll. Um, we have not gotten any qualified candidates um applied yet. And then, again, our S R O officer is in the works of getting all that paperwork switched over to be officially hired for that. Um, and it will be somebody that's currently in our police department. Um, and we have an M O U tonight, um fixing a step rate. That's just changing some numbers that were misprinted. So that is all, and we ended at six ten, and our next meeting is also on the twentieth.
Any questions from the community related to H R within the city? Any questions from s- council? Finance?
All right, uh I'll be reporting for finance. We met at six ten tonight. In attendance were Councilmember Rounds, the mayor, and myself. Um, our audit is still progressing. Everything's going as expected there. Um, this audit's a little more in-depth with both financial elements and a technology element. Um, a piece of that that's being reviewed is us progressing from our old Vision software to Tyler Tech for payroll. Um, and another note is that our account codes are in the process of being revamped and updated, and that's all.
Any questions from the community? Questions from council? All right, reports to city council.
I've been out of town, so I haven't done much in town.
Well, I just want to take a moment to just recognize that this last week has been really hard for our nation, and I just think that it's nice that we all came together and lowered our flags, and I really do appreciate Mr. Pettit speaking tonight, but you know, there's a lot happening, and I just appreciate that people continue to be vigilant and continue to just love each other as our neighborhoods, because it's hard on our kids right now, and it's hard on all of us, but I just want to recognize that, because working in the schools and having teenagers of my own, I definitely saw how much they were impacted by all that happened this last week, so I think it's important for us to recognize that.
Yeah, I would echo that there. I mean, we aren't always going to see eye to eye, but treating each other with respect and dignity, there's something to be said, and it's not very difficult to do that, so thank you for addressing that. Anything else?
Um, I think we could also announce, I think it's Friday, October third, we discussed was youth night at the high school for the football game.
Yes, our next home game is Friday, October third.
And I heard there's a chance that our new S R O could be introduced, so if you are able to make it, good opportunity.
That would be a great way to introduce the individual.
Probably at halftime.
Yeah.
Wow.
Big night.
That would be almost like doing homecoming. That would be great.
And it's youth night, so it's perfect.
Yes, exactly.
Let's do it. I got some crowds at my house.
So that's great when we can partner with the school on something, you know, doing something different, non-traditional. Any other items for council? All right, moving into reports of advisory committees. Keith, come on up, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. Chamber of Commerce, uh new memberships are fifty percent off for the remainder of the year. Uh, join us, and we'll get some, get some things going for you. The next luncheon is on September sixteenth at Oak Tree Restaurant. Um, we're uh, luncheons are back to being weekly in September, October, and all are welcome to attend. September twenty-third will feature Woodland Mayor Todd Deinhardt. So we'll have a packed room that night, I'm sure, or that afternoon. Additional upcoming speakers will include uh Woodland City Council and School Board candidates for October seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth. And the link to nominate Woodland's best of is available, and went out in the email blast. I'll be putting that out on Facebook. I think I did put it out on Facebook, and I'll still need to post it on the website. But uh we want you to nominate Woodland's um Citizen of the Year, uh Employee of the Year, and a Business of the Year. Uh, Woodland Chamber Coffee Crew next uh, it'll be October first from eight to ten A M. That's uh, we're doing it once a month now, and it'll be at McDonald's, October first, eight to ten. Upcoming events, uh Thursday, September twenty-fourth is the after hours at La Louska. Um, and that'll be from five to seven P M. And we're also collecting information and starting to work on the Make a Difference Day. So if you ha- want to help or you have a project, get ahold of me, get ahold of Riley. Uh, the Visitor Center, August, one hundred and thirty-four individuals through the door, eight phone calls, and five hundred and three cumulative cars counted in the park and ride. The car count is based on one time a day at when we open. Um, the discussion of collecting data related to visitors, trips, and tourism has and continues to be a robust one. In investigation, little or nothing can be found in which an authority has actually issued a matrix or an equation for counting visitors arbitrarily, even in its apparent legitimacy. Historic information indicates asking visitors how many may have given way to the assumption that a visitor through the door equated to three in the car. This will be an ongoing discussion with past and present stakeholders on all levels as far as historical practices and consistency or lack of consistency between cities. Um, additional data includes online activity of four hundred and forty-two Google profile views, eighty-eight searches, and seventy-five queries asking for directions. Uh, those are where the Visitor Center was the result. Top search terms returning the Woodland visitors' information or tourist center were Visitor Center fifty-two, Travel Center twenty, and Woodland Information Center, Gurg Street, Woodland sixteen. So the staff in the visit- at the Visitor Centers dedicated to providing the highest quality of service and information for everybody. We've had visitors from all over the world, and they're glad to sign our our book when they come in, because they get such good service. Uh, Johnson Ridge Observatory remains closed due to road closure. The Forest Learning Center closes for the season September thirtieth, and the Science Center closes October thirtieth. Forest Roads ninety-nine and twenty-five are not passable at this time. Uh, we continue to sell Northwest Forest passes and Discover passes. Some pricing will change in October. We're closed on Tuesdays, open ten to two on Sunday, and ten to four otherwise. During the beginning of June twenty twenty-five, we temporarily reduced hours due to a staffing change, and now we're working on establishing a new seasonal schedule and overall increase in operating hours. Currently, we're open thirty-four hours and looking to increase to forty-seven in the winter and fifty-six in the spring, being open every day. Uh, we're re-establishing a volunteer program to supplement the labor needs with a goal of being open seven days a week. Uh, the new bus there, River Cities Transit, is on the weekdays, and the schedule's posted seems to be working pretty good. Uh, also during October, we'll have the candidates. I have the schedule for that if anybody needs that. Any questions?
Nope.
Yeah, I asked last uh meeting, uh how much is the transit?
Two dollars.
Still two dollars?
Yep. All the prices are listed on the website. And it's still pretty affordable, it looks like. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Or anyone in the community? All right, great report up. Oh, was there?
Yes. Ms. Butler?
I'm sorry.
You've mentioned about um volunteers at the Visitor Center. Um, would, would it be okay, like, for students from the high school to come and volunteer?
We're, we're actually working with the high school already, so we're gonna figure that all out. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, thank you, Keith. Um, reports to city officers, the mayor's report. So um, let me go through a few of these here. I appreciate seeing our um commissioners from the county here. Welcome. Um, first thing is tomorrow night is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, L T A C. So um, the documents are out there. This is where organizations come forward and look for funding to be put in the twenty twenty-six budget. So the L T A C committee um makes the recommendation. Council then, from that, approves it or sends it back to L T A C committee, and the L T A C committee would come back with a different recommendation. So the reason I bring this up is you, as you look at the documents that are out there for tomorrow, um, we typically have about sixty to seventy thousand dollars of ask each year. This year, we've got a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in ask. Uh, D W R is out there for fifty thousand. Chamber is out there for fifty thousand. The Lilac Gardens is for ten thousand, and Planters Days is for five thousand. There's about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars there, and we um receive anywhere from seventy to eighty thousand dollars annually. So um, interested parties, please come tomorrow night to the L T A C committee, so that will help us with our budget. The other item I throw out there is on the eighteenth, which is Thursday is our next Planning Commission meeting. Marijuana is on the Planning Commission uh agenda. So I just want people to understand where this comes from. So um, the business pays twenty-five hundred dollars to ask for a change in the zoning. And to do a change in zoning, you go through the Planning Commission. Planning Commission makes the recommendations, and then it comes to council. Council does not have to agree with Planning Commission, so if Planning Commission says yes, it's to be changed, council still gets a vote. If Planning Commission says no, it still comes to council, and council can say yes. Again, they are in a, it's an advisory to the council. Um, again, anybody that wants to change their zoning, that wants to put a business over here, or wants to put apartments or housing over here that is not compliant with our zoning, this is the route that it goes through. So I don't want anyone to say, oh, well, what, you know, what's happening here? This individual is doing his, you know, constitutional right and putting that twenty-five hundred dollars to the city, and it goes to the Planning Commission. So again, if you want to hear your, have your voice heard, please come to the Planning Commission on the eighteenth, and then it will be in November sometime that it will come to council to vote. Um, city council meeting on October sixth, and there's another one on the twentieth. So any questions on those items before I move into the next uh three items that I have?
What time is the L T A C meeting?
L T A C meeting is at six P M., and the Planning Commission meeting is at seven P M. Both of those are here in this room. So the next one I want to bring up is uh Granite Construction. I have an individual here in the uh audience. So Granite Construction is looking to put an asphalt plant down at the Martin Bar. Um, as you can see here, Travis has pulled it up for um depiction of that location. It is outside of the city limits here, so a um new asphalt plant there, we would not get impact fees. And when I say impact fees, I'm talking about for roads, I'm talking about for schools, I'm talking about, you know, all water sewer. It's outside. It's a county decision there. I appreciate Granite Construction coming. They want to be partners with us here in the community. I recommend, or I commend them and them all for, you know, being partners. So they did a traffic study, and then, of course, when they do the traffic study and before they get their permits, um, interested parties can say whether they're yea, nay, as an individual, citizens, we can, the city of Woodland as an entity can. So dealing with their inner uh, having conversations with Travis, I recommended to Travis at the city be a, to the negative, non, to the non-favorable side, without being heavily favorable or neutral. My concern here was the impact to exit twenty-two. I'm not against them coming to town. I'm not against adding jobs, paying jobs, uh, and another tax-paying uh business here in the city. That's not what I'm against all, but again, it was the impacts. So I had Travis do some numbers and um also work with the county. So if they were inside the city limits, their road improvements that impact fees would be roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, the nineteen peak um hour trips in the P M. So that is how our impact fees are calculated, due to number of trips and times your dollar amount, and that gets you down to a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So kudos to Granite. They um reached out to the city here and have exchanged a couple emails, and so this is where me, with my transparency, I like to communicate with where the discussion has been, provide guidance. Again, this isn't something that comes to council and council votes on, but this is something that we as a city have conversation with them. So a couple of the things that they're looking at, and again, they're not required to give us any mitigation here. The city is just another voice to say whether or not they want to. We can't stop this. We can't say yea. Again, I'm looking at three, you know, county commissioners here, and the um permitting would come from the county. So Granite Construction uh has offered and talked to us about, what if they gave us a fifty thousand dollar credit for a city project? So there are park improvements that we want to do, they're building an asphalt plant, could they give us fifty thousand dollar credit um of asphalt? Another possibility is ten thousand dollar gift payment each year for five years. So there are things that are out there, and I welcome, if you would like to speak, you are more than welcome to. Um, and if I misclassify anything, let me know. I think I've, I'm trying to be very, you know. Okay, and so it's one of those things where how do we as the city partner with this business and also protect the infrastructure and things here of the city? Um, again, I don't have the answers. I don't think, you know, Granite Construction has the answers, but I think it comes back to partnerships, dialogue, conversation, creating solutions. You know, is there gonna be, one person's gonna win, one person's gonna lose? You know, I don't think so. I think there's always, you know, opportunity for everybody to come together. So I throw that out there. Um, anyone in the community want to speak on this behalf? I know I'm hitting people cold turkey. Anyone from council?
I just want to say thank you to Granite Construction for even being willing to meet us in the middle somewhere and taking our residents under consideration and what the city thinks. Um, I agree with um the mayor that I welcome new business, and I welcome the job opportunities for our own citizens in this town. Um, so I appreciate that you're willing to work with us and not just be like, we're coming, haha. So, thank you.
And it's a fifty-five-year lease, so this is a long-term, you know, employment opportunity inside uh Woodland.
This is asphalt?
Yeah.
Would you be running year-round with asphalt?
Well, the seasonality of the business kind of limits you anyways. I mean, it is a year-round business, but as, as you see, as a resident of Western Washington, a lot of construction happens between, you know, July
Right, correct.
For the most part, but the plant would run, you know, it runs
Year-round.
But the major production is, yeah, in the summertime, and during the dry months, we can actually get good quality.
So it wouldn't be such an impact basically during the winter months?
It was, it's much, it's much slower during the winter.
Yeah.
We even have a winter shutdown typically between, like, December fifteenth and January fifteenth. Now that said, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you.
No, I know, I know.
I apologize. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I'm ca- I'm concerned about the road conditions out there right now. They weren't good enough before to approve, I think it was Knife River, when we had that. Um, also the traffic impact, if we're ninety-five percent full um at exit twenty-two right now, what's that gonna do to us?
Travis, do you want to touch on the first piece about the prior business?
The prior business?
Sure.
I don't know if you know.
So um, the Port of Woodland, when the director was in place, had been working with a different, very similar developer. I'm not sure whether they are related or not. Um, but we had sent off a letter to the Port of Woodland. It was a typical poke the bear letter, only in this case it was a different bear, because it was the port instead of the county. Um, and we had raised this same issue with them, and because the port director is no longer there, and I didn't have any direct contact with the developer at that time, I don't know if there was any discussion of that. This was a separate project that I did my typical letter to, and um same information, but different numbers. So.
And I, that's why I say it here. Granite Construction has come forward. I mean, they have conversations with us, they've been emailing, there has been dialogue here. It's not one of those things, we're in the county, we're gonna work out this way here. Hey, how do we partner with the city? So go ahead, sir.
Well, one, one thing I just want to clarify real quick. He asked about Knife River. That was probably five, six years ago.
Yeah.
Before, they, they, they looked at the site, um, very similar operations materials, ready-mix asphalt. We're, we're competitors in, in the region here. They're uh based out of, um, around here, they're based out of Trump, they have a large site there. So that project is separate from the project that Travis was talking about. Uh, the most current project that Travis was speaking about is uh Wilsonville Concrete Products located in the Martin Bar, and that's when the Port of Woodland was going through, and they were the lead agency in, in that scenario. That was just specifically a, a smaller operation with a ready-mix plant. But, so, and now, now Granite's in this process here, we're a little, we're quite a bit further along than, than Knife River was. We've also proposed mitigation for dike roads specifically. We're gonna, um, when we get up and running, we're gonna grind out the, a good section of that and overlay that to help, till they can get the county to get the funding to do the bigger project, which involves, you know, permitting with the dike in a more robust road grade to support, to support the operations out there.
So. Yeah, I'm just concerned about them too.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Um, I will go on record and say I'm in favor of them coming. I am all about creating jobs, doing, you know, creating business for this uh, it's not inside the city, but it's within, you know, Woodland area here. There are good-paying jobs, and um they want to partner right out of the gate. I don't see why you would not want to build a fifty-five-year relationship with a business such as this, who is also wanting to improve, you know, the roads out there, so.
So we, we know that community outreach is important, and um, we, we want to put our best step forward here in, in the city. And, and last year, unfortunately, he's not here today, but my, my lead project manager on this project, Steven Hetzel, um, worked with Columbia Elementary School, and we paved the, the walking path out there. And that was a, a kind of a partnership with Jennifer Redd Keen, suggested, you know, shortly after. Suggested, you know, shortly after we had signed, signed the agreement to let us know the opportunity. And so we took advantage of that opportunity and we had quite a few good responses from the families and children from the school.
Hundred percent. So. Mr. Brown, come on up.
I guess I don't need my glasses. It's like so natural. It's like, well, let me find the microphone. Oh, there it is. I'm Aaron Brown and I'm approaching as a citizen. I'm in the unique position of living very close to Portco. And I'm actually in the unique position of being close personal friends with the CEO of Portco. I've known him since middle school. We just had lunch last week. We're in the process of partnering with Downtown Woodland Revitalization and Portco. And he said his number one priority is being a good neighbor. And so that's why he got together with me and is interested in that for Woodland. So I think it's probably pretty expected that any citizen would look at a new company, a new company with lots of movement, a lot of production, a lot of trucking, with a certain eye of skepticism. And I guess I would weigh in for the record that my friend Kent is an example of wanting to partner with the city. And so despite the skepticism, I welcome it also. Welcome to Woodland.
Any other comments from community or citizen or council? Alright, so obviously I'll be working with staff and we'll be in communication and have a conversation. Absolutely. No, thank you. I appreciate you coming. Continuing on, so next one here. Apartments on Lewis River Road. So, I just, again, as conversations happen inside City Hall and as I meet with community members, I think it's important that people know and understand who I've had conversations with and the opportunities or dealings that are out there. So, there is a developer. So between, you can see the roundabout there and you see the Baptist Church. So, if you go east of the roundabout, east of the apartment complex is there, east, there's two homes there and a little bit further. Anyway, there is some homes in there and then there is some raw land. A developer has purchased some of those houses in there and is looking to put apartment complex in there. I share this with you all. That is high density. It's not something you can go change the zoning and the, you know, ordinances on. If you were to put a moratorium, there would be issues there. There's only certain reasons you could do a moratorium. And one is water sewer and we do have water and sewer capacity. Again, I just want people to be aware that that is something that is out there and probably will be coming before us. Again, if he fits within the zoning and he fits within the ordinance, it's one of those things that, hey, you know, property owner has a right to do what they do with their property.
How many?
I, we haven't got that far into it. It was more of a, developers coming in, having a conversation with me, having a conversation with Travis. They realized that we wanna be transparent. We wanna have dialogue and conversation. And so rather than just slamming it on the table one day, they come in and say, hey, this is what we're trying to do. And I'm very open with them and hey, we're gonna have a dialogue and conversation here. And if you wanna come to city council, I welcome the conversation there.
So did you say they bought those houses right there next to the apartments?
Not next to the apartment complex, but a couple of the others.
Okay.
So. And they, those property does not go all the way down to the river. BW, or not DW, or. Help me out Travis, I just.
DFW?
Yes, thank you. Owns part of that down there. So, again, I just share that with the community of potential apartment complexes there. DNR, thank you Department of Natural Resources. Thank you. Okay. Any questions from the community or city council on that one? So, let's go further up Lewis River Road. And let's go to what I'd like to call the non-apartment area. So, in this section here, there is like a, what I call a U-shaped piece of property. If you see the brown area there at the bottom, that is owned by a developer. And right in the middle of that is seven, roughly seven acres that the city of Woodland owns. So, go back to that other piece, Travis. Yes, please. So, also along there is a Williams Pipeline that is to the east that you are not able to build on, but there is a sliver of property there. So a developer has approached us. He bought that property that is there to the east. He owns the U-shape around our seven acres. He came into the, I'm kinda sitting here because my response to him was probably not what he wanted, but I was kinda direct with him. He came in and he said, how would you feel about an RV park? We could put pickleball courts in, we could put basketball courts in, we could put some shelters down there on the city of Woodland property. And we could make it a camping area down there. My first reaction was no. Not interested in that. Again, again, it's within zoning you have to do. There is not zoning for an RV park there. So that would have to go to the planning commission, would have to come to city council on this. It is zoned down there for residential. And so he was trying to get the temperature. Again, like I told him, I don't speak for council. I only speak for myself and implementing what council directs me to. My first instinct was, ah, no. I can't imagine having residents that live there, residents that live over off of Gun Club. And I talked to him about how we're looking to do safe routes to schools and get sidewalks that go on that piece and go up around past Misty and up Lewis River and over and do a crosswalk up by the school. How you would have children and kids that wanna go down to the river going past RV parks? Nothing against RV parks. I just, you have RVs that are moving. It's not, you know, I mean, a little bit different. And he was talking about that they would have a full-time park ranger there. He brought up Speely Eye and some of the campgrounds that Pacific Power has up on the Lewis River. And anyway, I just throw this out there. Community comment, people on council, their thoughts. If you all disagree with me, I'm perfectly fine with that. But.
I'm just feeling like we're kind of at the cap for RV parks in our small town. And I also kind of visualize if it's going to be an RV park in traditional sense of an RV park, so you've got people in and out and then you're going to have homes built right in front of that, that just seems like a very awkward setup and not fair to homeowners that would live a hundred yards from said RV park. So.
So his response to me on that was that he would hope to have his RV park in there before the homes go in. So the homeowners, when they buy, they would know what they're getting into. Again, I'm just sharing my conversation.
Well, and then you think about that from the perspective of the developer who's putting money into that land. How much less appetizing did you just make those homes to purchase because you have an RV park behind it? So.
With the traffic with RVs trying to, the traffic is horrible out there already. But the traffic with RVs kinda trying to turn off the road there is gonna be tremendous.
So, traffic, I'm gonna throw this out there just because I know I have three county commissioners here and here's my opportunity to throw in traffic. And they're all kinda laughing because they've all met with me and hear about it regularly. Again, when we talk about traffic, the city of Woodland since two thousand sixteen, so in ten years, has gone up two hundred and twelve homes that are occupied. That's roughly twenty a year that are occupied. That's inside the city limits. You go outside the city limits, there are more than twenty homes per year going in out there. So again, we've, it's very difficult to say, oh, you county residents, you go do what you wanna do with your property. But because you live inside the city limits and traffic is so bad here, you can't do what's on your prop. Do you see what I'm saying? There's a balancing here. Again, it's not zoned for an RV park. So I told him I probably would have a tough time going there. Council would have to decide, but me personally, I would be saying no go. But I don't get a vote. Mr. Doughty?
I'm absolutely not in favor of an RV park going in at that location. I think there's just many facets that, I think children's safety, I think the traffic impact, I think also all the homes that are around there. And I agree with the friend, like, we just have a lot of RVs already here that I think we need to just hold off on changing any zoning for more RVs in Woodland.
And again, he has not come forward with any change in zoning. I wanna be clear on that. So there's nothing there.
Are we talking where the arrow is?
All the way into the road.
So, hold on, right where that road, that arrow is.
Right.
There's a U shape. If you go with the dirt up, over and down, that is a developer-owned property. The green within that is a city-owned property. And we have a right-of-way that goes through that property. So his question to me was, well, what are you envisioning to do with your seven acres there, sir? And I said, my envision was we would have a couple shelters or something down there. If you look at the shelter down at Horseshoe, it's rented out regularly where people can go rent it. They can have a barbecue, they can have family gatherings. No different here. And he says, well, where are you gonna get the funding for that? And I said, well, we do have a lot of park impact fee dollars that are coming in. So the cost to build those structures, but I would also, you know, look for partners and companies that want to, you know, partner with the city and maybe put their names on it or something of that effect. And then ongoing, we would have to find the funding for that. But that was my envision here. And that's where I said, oh, well, we could put some of those structures in there with the RV.
My question also is, isn't some of that in the floodway?
But again, when you get to the floodway, you can't have a permanent structure.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
You have cement.
Could you, could you even put a building there though? With it being in the floodway?
Right. If you put a, when I say a structure or a.
Like a pole?
I'm talking in a, like a pole, I mean, four posts, you know, with a nice, there you go. So water would still flow through it. I'm not talking about a four-sided building. So, yes.
You could do that.
And working with, you know. So, anyway.
I've been a RV owner and user since nineteen sixty-eight. Owned all kinds of RVs. Currently own a fifty, forty-six footer and an F-four fifty truck. So I can speak with a little bit of expertise on the traffic that this would cause. Moving vehicles like that with semi amateur drivers sometimes would complicate our traffic situation. Probably one way in and one way out on that. So, based on that and that alone, the others, you know, circumstances consider aside, I'd have to definitely be against that just because I know the kind of traffic problem that would cause.
Again, no action by council here. It's me. When people say, what have you done over the last week and a half, two weeks, sir? These are the conversations and the dialogue that have happened. Anything else? Mr. Goddard?
You know I'm dying to weigh in on this. Cuz the conversation, I've had a couple conversations with this gentleman and the conversations I've had were significantly different than the conversation that they presented with you. Because I think they looked at Belmont Loop and they see a great park that the community probably rallies arounds and loves. And so they thought that was a selling point. So, he shot himself in the foot right at the start of that conversation. Cuz that's not how that is seen by the community.
Travis and Riley were in this meeting with me.
This site that we own out there, that's six and a half acres, has severe access issues plus the encumbrance of the floodway zoning. One of the quirks of the floodway zoning is it specifically, the primary uses that it encourages are public recreation facilities. And this gentleman who acquired this property on the outside, the way he was framing the conversation throughout our discussions and that is, what is the city gonna do with that? And the answer to that right now is nothing for a couple reasons. One is the challenges, the floodway and the money it would take to develop that park. And part of his comment was, well, you know, if we built that park for you and pickleball courts and horseshoe, horseshoe courts and basketball courts and walking trails. Because he knows that there is a trail, informal trail system that's out all the way along that river and people currently use. They go down to that boat launch that is not developed. But they foresee an apartment complex up here and an access point to what they called a, a primitive campground. And if you look at like Kalamah where there are gravel roads, there's tons of open space. There is very little, if any, cement or pads or anything like that. If you imagine something like a state or a national forest campground where you drive in, there's lots of logs, there's lots of gravel, there's little burn pits or picnic tables as opposed to what we have typically at Belmont Loop or Woodland Shores. So, they were not thinking of something like that. But they understand that we just have a maintenance burden down at that point. And part of their sales is, well, you know, if we could open a campground down there, tents and RVs and we had restroom facilities, maybe a corner store up at the apartment that kind of is the gateway to getting in there, then we would be able to employ a full-time maintenance manager who would do maintenance on all of the city park plus their facility. And that it would allow them to have enough revenue that they would be able to man that park year-round. The other thing they pointed out and that is, this, because it is city park, it would be open to members of the community. And because it does not necessarily have a parking lot associated with it, it's one way for the city to limit the users of this park. And it would be essentially the size of Horseshoe Lake Park where anyone from the community would be able to walk down there and use the trail system. And if we could get that state routes to school or we could get a trail system along here to the roundabout, we essentially would have a trail connection throughout the community that would not even have to be maintained by the taxpayers. It would be part of that partnership with this developer. So, while I understand the idea of having an RV park is there, part of his question is, if you could lease me that seven acres and I were to develop a park for the community, would you be open to this conversation?
Because he needs to have, he's looking for a revenue source. So, we left it at he's going to create some drawings, go back to the drawing board and I welcomed him to come to a council meeting and have a conversation. Like anybody else, dialogue is the best way to go. So, look for him to come. I don't know if that'll be a week or two weeks or in three months, but that's where I left it with him.
And part of the reason I wanted to point that out is, I told him flat out, an RV park is a commercial use in our code. He could not do this in this property cuz it is not a commercial use. So, that's part of the reason why he's going to focus on the idea of a recreation facility that includes this rustic camping as that means of the business aspect of this partnership. So, and the reason why I'm pointing that out is, it was clear from your reactions, a lot of you had the same reaction that the mayor did and that is, you're not interested. But this will come back before you and I want you to understand that I'm warning you now that I'm not throwing you to the wolves when he comes back and he's gonna have an argument and wanna bring it up. So I'm not encouraged to disobedience.
He threw me to the wolves and says, mayor, we're gonna have a meeting. When can you show up? And I walk in, the guy says, let's have an RV park. Riley says he's out. So, any questions, comments on this? And that's what I had for the mayor's message this week. Okay. Consent items. Consent items.
Make a motion to approve the consent item.
Second.
Questions, comments on the minutes from anyone in the community or on City Council? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Moving into action items, action item B, approve vouchers for September first half twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve action item B.
Second.
I have a first from Ms. Rounds and a second from Mr. Friend. Any comments or questions from the council or the community? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
The eyes have it, moving into action item C, ordinance number fifteen seventy-five, amending ordinance number fourteen thirty-five. WMC chapter nine point five-five, camping on public property to further regulate and prohibit camping on public streets. Second and final reading.
Motion to approve ordinance number fifteen seventy-five.
I have a first and Ms. Doughty and a second and a Ms. Rounds, anybody from the community have questions on this, this was tightening up the language? Anyone from council?
Um I just think that it's great that we're finally um putting this to bed and getting it all squared away. Cause I know we had already done this and we needed to change the language a little bit, I know that we were just cited. For in Calitz County to be the last one not to have this ordinance passed, so I'm glad we're getting it all out of the way.
We actually had the ordinance, but we've changed and tightened the language, so yeah.
We'll just include the uh. Chamber of, chamber parking.
So that property there is owned by Washdot, so it's not correct. So, let's pass this, well. There's a motor home there, I would just, I know where you're going on here, that was over on the property where Wendy's is going. We don't have the authority to move it off of private property, so we had to work with the landowner there. To get something signed by them that they did not want that motor home on their property, once we got the document signed, we were able to. Um approach and have a conversation with that landowner or that uh RV owner and told them, move along. Well, they've now moved to the park and ride, which is owned by Washdot, so. Back to the drawing board and continue on there, so. Any other questions on this ordinance here? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Moving into action item D, authorize the mayor to sign memorandum of understanding with Teamsters Local Number Fifty-eight.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a first and a second, any questions or comments from the community or council? This here was when the contract was signed, um the numbers were transposed by uh the clericals. Over at the union and when it came over, so instead of it being ninety-four cents, it says forty-nine cents. So this gets us in compliance, so that when we have an individual that's in that, we don't get written up by state auditors. So, any questions or comments on that? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Authorize the mayor to appoint, action item E, uh authorize the mayor to appoint Nick Chan to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC.
Make a motion to approve action item E.
Second.
I have a first and a second, any questions or comments? Regarding Nick's appointment? Okay.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Moving into action item F, authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Mary Grimm, Longview Defenders PLLC. For Indigenous Defense Services.
Make a motion to approve action item F.
Second.
I have a first and a second, any questions or comments from the community? This here is uh who we use for Indigenous Defense, we're required to provide those services if it's a case coming out of the city of Woodland. This tidies it up and provides us with a contract with Mary Grimm. Questions? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
The eyes have it, moving into action item G, authorize mayor to sign Washdot. Agreement awarding Gun Club Road Sidewalk Bike Lane ADA and overlay construction contract with Jeffries Construction.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So I have a first from Ms. Doughty and a second from Ms. Rounds. Any questions or comments on this, the opening of the bids was last week, um Jeffries was the low bidder. This contract then takes it back to Washdot, Washdot will do a formal review of Jeffries. Um because there is Washdot grant funding there. Questions or comments from the community or from council?
They have it approved?
Oh, no, we already have a first and a second.
Did they have any question about that short timeframe for construction?
Uh there was no questions about the eighty-eighty-eight day construction window, uh we do expect there to be a slight delay due to weather. Uh for the grind and overlay portion, so they're planning to come in, do the right-of-way acquisition, do the sidewalk, bike lane. And then come in in the spring and do the rest of the paving, so. We did have a lot of applicants or a lot of bids for those, we had fourteen in total, so Jeffries Construction was the apparent low bidder, so we're just waiting for Washdot to. Verify those documents and give us a finalized contract.
Um how how are they going to manage like school buses and transportation down Gun Club during the construction?
Yeah, that is gonna be kind of a juggling act, um they're well aware of the of the construction window. Uh we'll be in contact with the fire department, police department and the schools to do alternative routes during construction times and. Mitigate those construction windows to not interfere with the school uh window as well.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Or, sorry, Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Um moving into action item H, authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Power DMS for Woodland Police Department scheduling and tracking.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So I have a first and a second, questions or comments from the community, this here, we use them for scheduling, but this will allow. Us to have uh electronic records now for um. Not violent, what's the word I'm thinking of, chief?
It's gonna help us track use-of-force reports and uh vehicle pursuits digitally.
That was what it was, okay? Questions or comments on this, this would be in for next year's budget, it's a three-year contract, so they will be giving us twenty twenty-five, they'll be rolling into twenty twenty-six. Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
The eyes have it, moving into action item I, authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Washington Traffic Safety Commission to participate in a grant opportunity.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a first and a second, any questions or comments on this one?
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
The eyes have it, the time is now seven fifty-nine.
Make a motion to end the meeting.
Second.
Adjourn, thank you everybody.